Hello, this is Justin from Rio Grande Sierra. And I'd like to thank everybody who has subscribed to the YouTube channel and click the bell to get notifications. I would encourage those of you have not, if you like what I'm doing to please subscribe and click the bell to get notifications. And if you like what I'm doing, please uh click subscribe. And don't be afraid to leave me a comment if you wanna suggest something for me to cover, or you'd like have it just wanna say something. I'd also like to th- thank everybody who has liked the uh Rio Grande Sierra Facebook page. Um and thank you for your support. I'd also like to say that I have uh created a Cash App account. And there will be a link to that in the uh description and what how what my name is on a Cash App. If you like what I'm doing and would like to support me to continue doing this, uh please just donate whatever you want. Um I'm wanting to use the I don't want to really make money off this, but I would like to improve some of my equipment. Um, thank you for that. Uh today I have a different kind of video. Today I have a reaction video to the video of the Alamosa City Council from August 5th to 2020, where they are discussing the ordinance uh involving masks. Uh so, let's get into the video.
Okay, that brings us to item number three A. Uh the first reading and public hearing of ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty.
I'd just like to say that Ty Coleman is the mayor of Alamosa. For ready to if you know if any if anybody doesn't know that, uh just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. That's me again, counselor or mayor. Um.
Uh sorry for pausing so much in the beginning. Um. This gentleman here is the uh city attorney for Alamosa. Uh in the white suit. Uh I Eric, I can't I I can't pronounce his last name. I'm not gonna attempt, sorry. Uh okay, so let's get back into the video.
As you know, the COVID nineteen pandemic has kept everybody from a national level down to a local level running around um scrambling, trying to figure out how to best address the coronavirus from a public health perspective. And uh we had a a slow start nationally and statewide, but eventually have a uh series of orders for the protection of public health issued by both the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment. Um and by the governor's orders. And I think in general, compliance with those orders in Alamosa has been fairly good. Um we have at times cooperated with the county Department of Public Health. Uh and the Alamosa Police Department to go out and address situations where there was non-compliance and and educate uh about what the what the orders were and gain compliance that way. Uh but we do have some instances where education had has not been sufficient. And what we have um in order to address those kind of situations is really a a two-pronged approach. If you've got businesses that are trying to comply with orders for the protection of public health. Uh and they have told some uh customer who is refusing to comply to leave, then that becomes a trespass and the business can call uh the police department and say, hey, I've got this customer who's trespassing on my property. Please cite them for trespass. We we have the police department able to do that. Um alternatively, if you have a business that is refusing to comply with public health orders after being educated. Um we can cite them into municipal court under reckless endangerment. Uh reckless endangerment is kind of a big hammer. You may remember that reckless endangerment is one of the ordinance violations for which council determined that jail was available as a remedy on first offense. Um there's only a handful of those that when you decriminalize the Alamosa Code of Ordinances, there was a handful that you still allowed for jail on a first offense and reckless endangerment is one of them. And uh I kinda think that's a bigger hammer than what you want. Um al- alternatively, the uh citation could be written into county or district court. Um because the Colorado statutes provide for enforcement of public health orders. Um as as law in and that can be done in county and district court, the jurisdiction of Alamosa.
Okay, that was a question I had was how was a order by the governor or the state public health law? Uh my thinking um was that a law had to be passed by the the state house, the state senate and signed by the governor. Um I would my questions to them and I will be asking them maybe off to go someplace else for the answers, but is uh why is or how is it able that a order can be put in as as law?
This municipal court is limited to ordinance violations. So we don't have an ordinance violation that addresses violation of public health orders. And therefore cannot write a simple straightforward violation of a public health order into Alamosa Municipal Court currently. We have to write in either trespass or reckless endangerment violations of those municipal ordinances. So what this ordinance does is uh makes a direct ordinance that makes very clear and simple that a violation of a public health order uh is an ordinance violation as well that can be written into municipal court, doesn't need to go the longer, slower, more complicated route of um of going through state court. Uh so that's really the the primary motivator is to um make it a easier to understand ordinance. I think it, you know, if violation of a public health order is a pretty clear violation versus reckless endangerment, which is um a problem, uh obviously to be addressed, but not so clearly tied to the public health order itself that's causing the endangerment. Um so that's the purpose of of this ordinance and um I think sums it up unless anybody's got oh, the the other issue is that this is set up to be passed as a an emergency ordinance so that we can get it in place quickly. Rather than waiting for a second reading. That means there's a public hearing tonight on this ordinance. So i- if council has any questions um for staff, we can address those, but we will need to open it up for a public hearing. Um and as an emergency ordinance.
Okay, here's another question I I plan on asking them is how much time before this meeting did they let the public know and how did they let the public know uh that this ordinance was going to be talked about? Um a- and and just how that was done and and the process on that alrighty?
Uh it has to, if it's to be passed as an emergency ordinance, has to receive a two-thirds vote.
There we have Counselor Carson up to speak and then followed by Counselor Hensley.
I got I got several concerns with this with this ordinance. Uh I don't disagree that if we can lighten up, you know, a a hard offense that we shouldn't. I do not disagree with that at all. I'm very confused as to how we I was very confused as to how we could do that as a municipality, which basically goes against, you know, what the governor's mandate is, which is not being able to lighten up those offenses. Um so I read through the ordinance and and the part that concerns me, I mean, I I've got a list of of things, but I'm just gonna put this out here because again, we need to understand what we're dealing with. The part that concerns me about this ordinance is uh where it refers to section six of our charter. Um I'm not sure why Eric had to include that part in it because that I don't know if we have to designate the mayor or monarch basically in order to do that because I trust Ty and I and I don't necessarily think that, you know, this was there was any involvement with this, the writing of this, but the reality is is that if we pass this, we don't only lighten up that ordinance, we give the mayor emergency powers, which basically gives him carte blanche to do whatever he wants. He no longer has to clear anything with council. He can do things. Um I mean, I I can share my screen if you guys would like to see the ordinance to to the extent of what the mayor would be able to do. But and and again, I don't I trust his judgment and I don't think that that there's any concern there. What what I do see is what does concern me is that uh municipalities and states around the country have passed orders similar to this, and I have seen governors and mayors lose their mind. Um that
Uh yeah, I this does sound very uh dangerous. Um I may be putting a little bit more of my personal views out here, but uh yeah, giving one person uh the ability to do whatever they want instead of having checks and balances uh could be very dangerous. I think Michael is uh making some very good points here.
They're passing ordinances uh that are that are completely um that will pull, you know, people's freedoms eventually in little incremental pieces. The thing is is again, I don't understand why we would have to give grant the mayor emergency powers in this ordinance in order to lighten up that that offense. So I really need clarification and in order to get that clarification, I don't think you can do it, you know, in ten minutes tonight. I think we need a work session or or something to that effect to get this done. Now, the other concern is that we're working on passing ordinance and giving the mayor uh these powers for a minimum of about thirty days. And the ma- the governor's order order is lifted in seven days. If it's, you know, according to him, it should be lifted in seven days. So I'm not sure why as a municipality, um again, you can lighten that offense, that would be great. I don't know how we do that uh legally unless this is the only route which is making the mayor uh basically giving him a ton more power and the power to circumvent council for any decision. He can close businesses, he can do a a ton of concerning things and again, I'm not, this isn't directed at Ty, this is directed at the charter. Um it refers to section six of our charter and uh in part of that, it says authority of in authority of the mayor in emergency. Uh he can close retail mall, vineyards, uh liquor, you know, spiritus, liquor stores, liquor outlets. Uh he can order the discontinuance of selling or distributing of gasoline. He can order the closing of gasoline stations. He can dis- discontinue the selling or distributing of firearms, ammunition. Um he can designate certain areas the city is being restricted to entry upon unauthorized persons. He can declare a public curfew prohibiting persons except those explicitly authorized from being on public streets or any public place in the city during certain hours. And he can establish a communication headquarters for the dissemination of public information and reports to the and relating to the emergency. Now, Ty is awesome and he's a great leader, but I don't feel comfortable giving anyone that kind of power. I believe city governments are in in place for a reason. And checks and balances need to be in place for a reason. So I have a extreme concern with this and I think before we pass anything like this, we need to discuss it at length instead of having a hearing. You know, a first reading and hearing and passing it in the same day. I think that's really, really uh expedited and and we need to we need to understand this more. Uh you know, we're we're talking about really needing to understand the zoning issue and get more.
I would uh I would like to say here that uh uh Michael's making another good point about rushing things, especially in this situation where you're gonna be giving the mayor uh so much power. That's that's a very good point that um that's something that that should be really looked at and paid attention to about uh doing due process and uh talking everything through it and fully ignoring what you're what you're voting for, no matter if you're for this or against this. Um I think it would benefit everybody that that those people involved are are fully informed and and really do understand what they are voting for.
Or information on that and we need all this information to to make a decision on it, yet we're willing to hand over the reins of council to one individual on a, you know, on the recommendation of our council. And again, Eric's a great lawyer. But I'm very uncomfortable with this ordinance. Uh and I really wish that everybody would read it and try to understand it. And if I'm way out of line, please clarify it for me because I have read through the ordinance and it specifically states that in uh paragraph it states that uh mayor is granted, you know, he's granted those authorities according to section six of our charter. So I'm not sure why that was necessary, uh but I I really think that we should question this. Thank you.
Uh Counselor Carson, let me try to cl- see if I can clarify some of that.
Please do, cuz I'm I'm very confused here.
Right, so section si- or chapter six of the, it's actually not the charter, it's the code, but chapter six of the code um you were quoting from and it does give the mayor those various
Six point four and six point five.
Yeah, six five uh is the various emergency powers that it already gives to the mayor. This ordinance doesn't do anything about that, that those powers.
That's it, but but we're declaring an emergency with this ordinance. That's what the ordinance explicitly states in the ordinance. We are declaring an emergency situation and granting him these powers.
Well, no, the ordinance is enacted as an emergency ordinance, just merely meaning that it's enacted on one reading instead of two. That's all that means.
That that isn't clear to me. That's the problem is that's not clear. And so I think we need to discuss this more before we pass it.
Well, so here's where I was going though first was to try to clarify um the issue is that the mayor under section six five already has authority to proclaim emergencies and to issue those various orders. That exists. You you read, it's there.
It wasn't the previous.
Let me finish, please. This ordinance does not add anything to those powers. Those already exist. What this ordinance says is it's a violation of the ordinances to violate an order that the mayor may happen to issue pursuant to section six five. Uh that actually already exists in ordinance as well because if you look at it at section six, seven. It says the members of the police force are authorized and directed to enforce the orders made or issued issued pursuant to this chapter. So that there's no change in this ordinance from what already exists in the code. Then we did, the council did declare a disaster emergency. But the mayor has not issued any orders pursuant to that disaster emergency and the particular emergency that we're in, the kind of orders that the mayor might be authorized to issue under section six five wouldn't address this emergency at all. I mean, none of those kinds of orders would make any sense.
What's the purpose of adding it to ordinance? Hmm? What is the purpose of adding it to an ordinance that's gonna be ratified and and the only people that have to sign it are the clerk and the mayor? What is the purpose of putting it in there? Cuz if I understand this, section six, three says the Disaster Emergency Council shall be charged with the duty of coordinating all civilian defense and emergency activities. Who's the Disaster Emergency Council? And a- again, uh go back to, I would like to go back to the emergency declaration and and you know, reevaluate that because I didn't see that in that declaration. I didn't see that we granted him these powers already. And if that's the case, then what are we doing in these council meetings? I mean, if he's got if he's got the authority to do all these things without our without our permission or without our vote. Uh that's an issue. I mean
Well, you know, you you may wanna raise a different issue about amending section six dash five. But what what I'm trying to indicate is that this proposed ordinance doesn't change section, chapter six at all. All this ordinance does is say um forget that most of what this ordinance does is say, look, if the governor or the state Department of Health or the county Department of Health issue orders, we can enforce those orders as an ordinance violation rather than uh in state court or rather than resorting to something, the concept of reckless endangerment. Um that's all this ordinance does. It doesn't give the mayor or anybody else any powers to do anything.
And if if I can just jump in a little bit, the this the area of the ordinance that Counselor Carson's referring to is usually the background area that's setting up the reason and the foundation then for what the recommended change from an ordinance perspective is gonna be. So the beginning of this ordinance is identifying um the powers of the Colorado Department of Public Health. It's identifying the powers of the county boards. It's identifying um the sections twenty-five dash one dash one, one fourteen. It's identifying chapter six as Counselor Carson's indicated.
Well, I
Identifying areas that are in existence that then lead up to then what the recommended change is. Is that in saying it?
Uh well, Counselor Carson can speak for himself, but i- in the now, therefore be it ordained section, there is a reference to paragraph six. And I think that's what he was concerned about is it says, or to chapter six, I mean. So a new section six, ten is being added to the code and it says it's unlawful to willfully violate an order issued by the governor, the Department of Health, the county Department of Health, or if issued pursuant to chapter six, and we just went through six, five about the kinds of orders that the mayor can issue, or one of those mayor orders.
So that's the only part that's new then to the section is that wording right there.
Yes, and that's not even new is what I'm saying because section six dash seven currently says the police shall enforce the mayor's orders. So it really that really doesn't change anything.
Okay. That's gonna take us to uh Counselor Hensley, followed by Counselor Dan.
So I guess my question might be a little simpler and um just wanted a little clarification. So Eric, you mentioned about municipal court versus um I guess county or state. And so can you just explain a little bit why is it I it sounds to me it's an advantage to anybody who might get a citation to keep it in municipal court for their sake? Could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, there's a a number of advantages. Um the first is that a municipal court violation does not go on your criminal record that's pulled up on a state background check. It's a municipal ordinance violation and just they're not generally serious enough to show up on criminal background check records. So that I think is probably the the most important uh difference. And then secondly, I think municipal court is much more responsive and and quick than state court can be. So the um the statute of limitations is the wrong word. It's escaping me right now, but the uh speedy trial deadline in municipal court is ninety-one days. In state court, it's a hundred and eighty days. So that whole process is much more drawn out. Um and and more expensive for defendant if they're going to deal with that. The potential fines are usually greater in state court uh than they are in municipal court has limited jurisdiction in terms of the amount of fine it can en- enact or the length of time it can jail somebody for. I I think the main difference is lack of a criminal record.
Okay, so that that's a good point to point out that I believe what they're trying to do with this is to lessen the offense because right now the way they are enforcing it in Alamosa is by charging people with uh hi- like they talked about in the beginning about higher like trespassing or endangerment, which which are far worse uh charges. Um not that I agree or disagree, I just tried to point this out that uh that that's what that this ordinance is trying to do is to give Alamosa a less a lesser charge to go with than than those other harsher charges.
I appreciate that clarification because I know in discussions with people in the community and stuff, um I think there was some thought that it might have been the reverse and I this that helps to clarify that that it's actually helping. Um I guess I don't wanna say minimize what is happening, but same time trying not to necessarily give them a criminal record or anything over this. So thank you.
Okay, we have a Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um so not to ju- I don't I don't wanna just repeat things, but it was really important for me as I was looking at this to remember that we have already declared an emergency in our city. Um and that those things have already been done. And then the other piece that is really um important to me is that this our police force, who will be responsible for enforcing this, whether or not they write it into state court or district court or or municipal court, they're still responsible to responding to our businesses. They're still responsible for helping people try to manage this and by not having an ordinance that makes sense for us. So us not having an ordinance that makes sense for the level of violation that it is calling it reckless endangerment, calling it something different um trespass, which it could still be trespass. I could see there being a violation of this part of the ordinance as well as trespassing if they've been asked to leave a private property like I could see potential there. You can clear that up if I'm wrong. I think it gives us a lot clearer direction on what we're asking of people and what their violation actually is. Um and so I really appreciate the um the addition of this. My question goes to, yes, I think that it is important. Yes, I know we've already declared an emergency. What is, would it be possible to go through the regular ordinance process or can we have a revisit of the reasoning why to make this an emergency ordinance now? Like, how many people are we talking about? Um can we just revisit that publicly, please?
I would think that's a good point uh about why it's being done as an emergency instead of a normal ordinance. And also that the fact that that they are doing an ordinance, uh I think makes more sense to me than just a order put out by the state uh that is being enforced into law. Um so that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, so it would be possible to do this uh on the regular ordinance process. The difference would be rather than being enacted tonight and being effective immediately, it could be enacted on the nineteenth and be effective ten days thereafter. So the diff- the major difference is you uh you move the effective date back from August fifth to August twenty-ninth. Um the
What if Polis lifted in seven days?
Yeah, he might. I don't I don't have any insight into Polis's head, but the more problematic orders that we've been seeing being violated aren't the governor's orders. They are the orders of the Colorado Department of Health. Um so I don't remember when ord- uh order number twenty dash twenty-eight is scheduled to expire, but it's been called ordinance twenty that or order twenty dash twenty-eight ever since it was first enacted in April and it just keeps being extended and modified with that same ordinance number and I I would be surprised if that gets lifted anytime soon.
Me too.
Okay, Counselor Rio.
The other answer is the 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 ordinance that if it's passed what's before council tonight is only going to be applicable for current orders. So if the governor takes something away or lifts something, then clearly there's not gonna be a violation for that. Or if the governor adds additional orders, then then it's applicable to that. So it's it's only relevant to what is existing at the time of those the possible infraction.
How long does our emergency order last?
I believe it's
Find it. I I'm trying to find the the that order where we granted the where we where we created the emergency. I wanna find it. I wanna see it. And I can't find it. Can you send that to me?
Yeah, I I'm pretty sure I can find it.
Cuz the it hasn't been written into the Code of Ordinances. I looked through it and I can't find it in there. So I was just curious.
Right, it's not an ordinance.
What's in what is an emergency mandate, an emergency declaration? What is it?
It was in March, Eric, I believe, was March when they declared the emergency.
And then does that is that declaration what what my concern is, I guess, is is that indefinite? And if it is indefinite, again, what you know, it's just it's all very strange to me. Um I I need to I need to see it. I wanna read it.
Uh no, it's not indefinite. I think it Uh, no, it's not indefinite. I think it's tied actually to the state's declaration of emergency.
So then it is indefinite.
No, the state's definition, uh, declaration of emergency also has to be continually renewed.
Counselor Grego.
Thank you, mayor. A comment and question, uh, I really appreciate the fact that that we're trying to do something to help some of these businesses that are already going through some hard, hard times and put some kind of criminal deal in their record is crazy, just because they're trying to exist. They're trying to survive, you know, so I agree with that. But I agree with, with counselor Daniels where, why don't we just go through the regular process? Do the first reading and if we have it, and then uh, put it in public hearing and instead of pushing it uh, through tonight. Thank you.
And you're still gonna need a public hearing tonight, because this was noticed as a public hearing.
Counselor Carson, your hand is up.
I apologize. I'm a little.
Okay, so um, at this time, I don't see.
That's a interesting thing. I just want to point out here is uh, they keep asking why it's being uh, done as an emergency and uh, nobody, nobody seems to have the answer to that or wants to answer that. At least yet, anyway.
You have the hands up, so I'm just going to uh, open it up for a public hearing. I'm second to make sure. No hands. So at this time, I don't see any uh, hands uh, lifted, so I would at this time, open up.
Hold on, so does this mean because it's a public hearing tonight, this means that this is the last chance? Anyone in the public has to chime in on this before we as a council pass it, correct?
If you pass it as an emergency ordinance with a two-thirds vote, that's correct. If you don't, um, you can, someone, so. Procedurally, if someone could make a motion to pass this as an emergency ordinance, if that passes by a two-thirds vote, then, then it's done. If it, if that fails to pass by a two-thirds vote, someone could make a motion that we pass it on first reading and set it for another public hearing on August nineteenth.
Okay, so, so my question, I mean, and, and tha- that's fine either way that we decide to go, I guess, uh, in the future, um, I guess whose call is it to post a public hearing without? You know, cause that should be, I guess, something we discussed in a meeting prior. Uh, I understand that it's being, trying to be pushed through as an emergency, but the posting is dictated by the clerk, correct? Or the manager, city manager, the attorney and the clerk?
Well, I, I'm not sure. At this point, I think we're splitting hairs, because you're not backed into a corner. So even we posted it as a public hearing, and so as the, as Eric has indicated, still hold the public hearing, but council's not backed into a corner and having to still pass it as an emergency ordinance if council's not comfortable with that.
No, but I mean, but the public comment or the public's way, the public's ability to chime in on it goes away, correct?
No, so they get to weigh in it on it tonight, because it was posted as a public hearing. But if you pa- pass it only as a first reading, then you would set it for second reading and another public hearing for the next date. So it, it's almost like there's more public hearings for it.
Gotcha. I, I would, I would much rather do that, but I understand. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, uh, counselor Carson. Okay, so at this time, I will now officially open up a public hearing for the um, ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty, and ordinance making it unlawful. Um, willing for me to violate a local, state or federal order issued for the protection of public health. So Ms. Martinez, do you have anyone uh, who would like to participate in this public hearing that are in IQ right now?
I don't have any, anyone raising their hand, but if you are on the call and do you want to speak on this, you can use the raise your hand feature, or if you're on the telephone dial, star nine. We have one person.
I have one person, okay.
Hi, this is Dean. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Dean.
Um, yeah, I just want to voice uh, public, uh, a public voice for this uh, this action. Uh, this is not a public hearing. Uh, you, you say that you posted it uh, as a notice for a public hearing. Yes, we, we understand the, the the, the guidelines that you have to follow, but nobody knows about this. Um, and so I would strongly support and suggest that you uh, continue this to a second reading, so the public can actually have time to read this ordinance. Um, as uh, counselor Carson was talking about, reading it and the various parts of it. It was confusing to him, and he's a counselor, let alone uh, uh, a regular citizen trying to read this in a moment's notice is basically what this is, is being done. Um, and so I would strongly suggest and, and recommend that this um, doesn't pass as an emergency ordinance tonight and that you guys um, continue this for a second reading, so the public can have time to weigh in on this and get the full transparent facts to this. Thank you.
So we had one person speak so far from the public. Um, I think he made some good points. Um, like I said, no matter whether you agree or disagree, I, I think uh, taking the proper uh, time to really understand and, and, and let the public voice their opinions, whether, whether you want this or you don't want this, um, is, is always a good thing.
Do you see anyone else uh, with their hands raised or who would like to participate in this public hearing before I close it and bring it back to council?
I do not.
Okay, so since there are no other hands raised at this particular time, I will now close uh, the public hearing for ordinance number.
Okay, so we've only had one person uh, in the public comment phase uh, make comment on that. I'd just like to make sure that, that, that that's hammered through.
For nineteen dash twenty twenty, and I will bring it back to council for further discussion and afterward. Okay, I have two hands uh, raised. I have counselor Carson, followed by counselor Dan.
Uh, I'd just like to acknowledge Dean, uh, Dean L, who uh, who spoke just now. Thank you for speaking up. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you, counselor Carson. Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Broles.
I have kind of that, a similar procedural question. I know what we talked about before. Um, I was thinking about, do we have to do the motion as an emergency ordinance first? And that either has to pass or fail, or could I make a motion to set it for a second hearing?
You, you could make a motion to set it for a second hearing. Um, uh, it, I guess I would say it would be cleaner to do the emergency first if anybody were of a mind to do that. Because if you set it for, that, there's no point in that. If the second hearing passes, uh, there's no reason to even consider the emergency. But um, if no one's of a mind to make a motion for the emergency, then that obviously solves that problem.
Okay, then I will just be quiet and wait for my fellow counselors. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Broles.
Yeah, I don't consider this an emergency. I mean, I'm going to make a motion that it's an emergency ordinance.
So, so to, to clarify, if no one wants to make an, a motion regarding it as an emergency, then the next step, if someone wants to, would be to approve on first reading and set for a second reading in a public hearing on August, I forget if it was the eighteenth or nineteenth. Or you can not approve it at all, but so you don't need to be forced, you don't feel like you need to be forced to make a motion for the, the emergency.
Well, I, I'd make a motion that this be first reading and we set second reading on August nineteenth.
Can I make a comment?
Hold on, one second, counselor Carson. Um, I have other people with their hands up.
Thank you, mayor. So then I guess my question is, and I, I respect y'all's opinions, and I think we should go that route too. But in the meantime, what do we do if we have a business? Can y'all hear me? What do we do if a business uh, is experiencing customers who are just flat refusing to comply with the governor's orders? I, I, what do we do?
They call the police, just like the governor's order says. They call the police and they're charged with trespass.
When the police come in and they educate, like we're all asking them to do, educate, 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 and then they refuse again, then what, what is, what do, we have to give some direction to our police, guys?
They, they have a direction on. They give a trespassing ticket.
Yeah, so if I can clarify, we're gonna continue as we've been doing it. This, so until some other change happens. So we'll continue the education and, you know, if, if we get the situation where there's someone trespassing because they won't leave, even when the police officers, they're asking them to, then they might get a ticket um, for trespass. Or if we have a business that is not complying, even after we've had multiple conversations and police have talked to them, then they will issue a citation into municipal court for reckless endangerment.
Thank you.
Counselor Carson, followed by counselor.
Mayor, there's a, there's a motion on the floor. David, uh, counselor Broyles made a motion and no one has seconded. Okay, thank you.
I wanted to make a comment before the second. Can, are, we're not allowed to do that?
We, we still have, we still have time to have further comments after we have a motion and a second. So we have a motion and my, and is that motion clear for everyone? That the motion that was made was clear enough for everyone? Because we have a motion on, on, on the floor now. We have a second. And now if we can go ahead for further uh, any other additional comments, counselor Carson, this is your time.
I, I, I was just gonna ask if it would behoove us to, and again, I know that it's unlikely, but I was just gonna ask if it would behoove us to wait till after the seven days are up to act on this at all. Because again, technically we do have that order in place. We have to do nothing as a municipality for them to enforce it. All the business owner has to do is call the police, and all the constituent does is have to call the police. They, they can do that either way right now. So I'm just asking is, you know, are we jumping the gun? Should we wait to see if he lifts it? I, I'm really hoping he does. I, I agree that it is unlikely, but uh, I'm just asking. And we can go forward with the motion and the second. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor Carson. Okay, um, counselor Veho, I see your, your hands raised. And we're still at that part to where if there's any further comments, this is that time. Counselor Veho, followed by counselor Dan.
Just a point of clarification, can, can we be uh, told what the motion was again? There was a lot of commotion going on at that time.
Thank you, counselor.
I believe the motion was to approve the ordinance on first reading and set it for a second reading and public hearing on August nineteenth, seven o'clock.
All right, counselor Daniel.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't think we should wait, because I don't think this is the only time there are going to be public health or issue, orders issued in the future. So while I can appreciate uh, counselor Carson's want to see where we are with this one at the state, I don't think that should preclude us from having the next hearing and getting something into motion, because this is now set a precedent for us being able to have these kinds of orders set down in our state that, then we would be responsible for enforcing. So passing it now and keeping it on our books and keeping it on our radar won't change that for me, even if something shifts at the state level in seven days.
Hey, thank you, counselor Daniel. Uh, counselor Carson, your hand is uh, still up? Okay, all right, good. We have a motion and we have a second. No further discussion. Ms. Martinez, uh, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
You're on mute, Mike?
You're muted.
No, no. My apologies.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
The motion carried six to one with counselor Carson casting the no vote.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Thanks for the uh, discussion and comments. Okay, that brings us down to.
Okay, so the ordinance was passed, but not as an emergency ordinance, which would have enacted it immediately. Uh, so it will have to go through a second reading and public hearing. That will be their next meeting, which is the nineteenth, August nineteenth. Um, so I would encourage the public to uh, definitely attend and, and get your uh, opinions heard, whether they're for or against. Um, and, and just everybody make your voice heard. And I'd like to thank everybody for watching this video, and it's a, it's a new video style for me. And, and uh, I just like to say the reason I did it as a reaction, because I am going to be posting somebody else's video, not a video that I took of myself. So the proper way to do that is as a reaction, because then you are modifying the content. You're just not stealing somebody else's content. So that's why I did it as a reaction video. Thank you for watching.